No, I was just telling you whenever you want to start, I have to mute my mic.
Get back in your seats, Jason. We have a call to meeting to order, roll call please.
Councilwoman Singleton?
Jim.
Payne, Mayor, Champion?
Yeah.
Cruz?
Present.
Powers? Here. We'll have silent prayer and then followed by the flag suit, I think we'll have Mr. Wincker. And, you know, there's a lot of things going on in this world, so please try to remember all those that are less fortunate than us and all of our men and women who are fighting in different parts of the world and all of our first responders who are taking care of us here at home.
Flag suit please. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, can you talk about the ask? Do you have anything to report, sorry? Do you have anything to report from our closed session?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. The council is in closed session this evening, conference with labor negotiators, and there's no action to report.
Thank you. Liz, would you please read the video statement?
This meeting of the Gulf City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast and Shore West Cable System. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.saxmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at 9:00 a.m. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at www.cigold.ca.us. A DVD copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
Thank you. Council, any agenda approval additions and or deletions?
I'd like to have E3 polled, please, for discussion.
E3 separate, okay.
E5 and 6.
E5 and 6.
And I would like to move up K1, committee appointment, to after presentation, before public comment.
Alrighty. Okay, so now Public Works, your water conservation presentation, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. Mr. Clarkson and I are going to present this item, so Mark, you might want to make your way to the front. We'd like to talk to you briefly today about getting organized here, some of the new state regulations that have just gone into effect this week, and the resulting Stage 2 water alert that we've declared for the City of Gulf, what that entails. Give you a quick update of the status of water use in Gulf going into the summer, and some quick impacts, positive impacts that water conservation can have for the city, and then talk briefly about sort of next steps as we continue this journey through a drought session. So, to be quick, today, on, I believe it was June 6th, I'm sorry, July 16th, the Water Resources Control Board adopted new regulations, and those became effective this past week on July 28th. They will be in effect for 270 days and will be further extended by executive order. And basically, those prohibit, as you've been hearing in the press and reading graphs, any excess application of potable water that would cause runoff to adjacent surfaces or properties. Any use of a hose without an automatic shut-off nozzle, the application of water to driveways or sidewalks, and it prohibits any fountains or decorative water features unless they have a water recirculation system. The new provisions and regulation also make provision for local agencies to assess up to $500 per day in fines. Currently, that would not be consistent with our water conservation ordinance, so for us to enact that, we would probably have to revisit our ordinance to take full advantage of that if council so desires. The regulations go on to create specific requirements for urban water suppliers, and the ones shown on this slide are the ones that would be applicable to the City of Gulf. We are an urban water supplier with more than 3,000 connections, and we do have an approved water shortage contingency plan as part of our urban water management plan. And therefore, we're required to implement the stage of our four-stage water conservation plan within our ordinance and within our water shortage contingency plan that restricts, creates a mandatory restriction on outdoor water. It also will require that all urban water agencies submit monthly reports, starting this month, on the prior month's water usage. And they have then also put in provision in law that, within existing law, that they have the right to assess fines to the water suppliers of up to $10,000 per day for violations of any of the state water regulations. So, as a result of those new regulations being rolled out, in concert with the city manager's office, we have declared a Stage 2 water alert set forth in our ordinance. And the specific provisions are actually not only compliant with the new state regulations, but have some additional restrictions. And we've outlined the key restrictions here, that any form of water waste designated as a non-beneficial use of water is prohibited under normal Stage 1. And normal Stage 1 also requires automatic shut-off devices be required on all hoses, and that water leaks or faulty sprinklers be repaired within five days. In addition to the state standards, Stage 2 requires that pools and spas not only have a circulation pump, but they have leak-proof construction, and that they be drained and refilled only for health, maintenance, or structural reasons. And approval is required under Stage 2 by the city engineer to drain and refill pools or ponds or spas. So additionally, outdoor irrigation is limited to three days per week. And if you have an even address within the City of Gulf, city limits, your days would be Wednesday and/or Friday and/or Sunday. If you have a odd address, your days would be Tuesday and/or Thursday and/or Saturday. In addition, Stage 2 requires no washing of hardscapes or structures except for health, sanitary, or fire protection purposes. Just received an interesting call today from a painter who pressure washes as prepped before they paint a home, and they wondered if they needed a special permit. And interestingly, the black and white of it says that would not necessarily be for health, sanitary, or fire protection. But I think we could read between the lines and indicate that for repairs, which are similar to those pools and spas for repair reasons or maintenance, that you can also use water. And I think we could probably issue them an exemption on a case-by-case basis for houses that were needing painting, roofs, et cetera, that need to be pressure washed before they could be re-roofed if they had algae buildup or something to that effect. So we'll be looking to be reasonably flexible as to the intent of the ordinance. Similarly, washing of vehicles, both in equipment, not only require a shut-off nozzle on the hose, but require the use of a bucket under Stage 2 for the wash water, and that rinsing be using the shut-off device in a maximum of three minutes for water use. So those are what our ordinance lays out. And then the ordinance does allow, in all stages, for penalties, and for stages 1 to 3, there's a listing here of what those offenses would be. First offense would be a warning, second offense, $25, third offense, $50, a fourth offense within a 12-month period would be a $100 penalty. All of these, under our ordinance, would be added to an ensuing month's water bill. We'll probably have to work out some appeal options for people that receive these citations. A fifth offense would require, if they don't already have one, installation of a water meter at customer expense plus the $100 fine. And any additional offenses would require or entail replacement of a flow restrictor on the water service at the customer's expense plus the $100 maximum fine. With that, Mr. Clarkson's going to talk briefly about water usage and some of the upside for water conservation in Gulf.
Mayor, City Council, looks like a little kid dribbled that line up there, up and down. It's a roller coaster. That's our water use that we have every year, and it starts in January 2011. The peaks are in July and August, the valleys are in December, January, and February. As you know, about 85% of our water use is not metered, and you know, it's not regulated through meters. So we get these high climbs, and this is pretty typical of an area that does not have a metered system. And what we've done to give you kind of a state of our utility system is the last couple of years, we've been doing a lot of repairs to the water system. We, you know, from pumps and motors and chemical feed pumps and such. And just recently, the 213 rehabilitation project, the council approved approximately $300,000 for repairs for four wells out there. We're in really good shape now. We got that way in about three weeks ago. We came up to where we needed to be. And as you see that green line right at the top, that's approximately our system capacity. Every year, you know, every year when we run into the summer, or the summer's coming, the flow rates, the demand just starts climbing. We don't know where it's going to end, you know, because we don't have the meter rates in place. We don't have meters in place. So we kind of keep our system capacity a little higher than what our known production rates are. One of the good things that I have to hand to the citizens of the City of Gulf, the last couple of months, people have been listening to the news media, the printed, the radio and such. And way over to that side, you see a little jog there, where it goes, I don't have a laser with me. Do you have a laser there, maybe? This little jog right here, that's April. Or that's the end of April, and it goes into May. May starts right in here, the end of June, and then July, the end of July. And if you look at the pattern across here, boy, it's really changed. We didn't have any mandatory requirements. We didn't have a Stage 2. Citizens have been listening. That shows in both of those months, a 10% reduction, which equates to around 75 million gallons of water we've saved over two months, just by the citizens taking it on themselves to decrease the water use. This is great for all types of things here, but it's, as we get into the Stage 2 that the regulations require, we're probably going to see that even decrease more. This is, the low that we're at right now is approximately a 14-year low. I went back in the records, hadn't seen anything like that since 2000, this low. So it's just terrific what's going on with the system right now, gives us a little bit more capacity. You know, we always hear about negative impacts on water conservation, people who can't, who don't feel that they can go out and keep their lawns green, or their trees watered, or their gardens. But just a little savings goes a long way. As you saw with that graph, and the millions of gallons that we've saved the last couple of months, you know, what does that do for us? Of course, it saves our, protects our natural resources, our groundwater. We're a groundwater system. It usually is about two years out before a drought will affect it, but it will affect us. If the drought continues, it will affect us. We also improve our water efficiency out there. The pressures increase in our water system. We're able to get the flow into the areas that we need to. Our pumps work at a more efficient level. We also have the system redundancy. We have two more pumps on hold waiting for emergency situations. We have, for those customers that are meters, those are the commercial and about 500-plus residential, they can see some decrease in their meter, in their bills. We have lower operation maintenance. Over the last two months, we've saved about $10,000 each month, and that's estimated for electrical and chemical costs, just in that little reduction we've had so far. And it delays big capital expenditures. This line, green line up on top, we hit that line, state requires us to put in another well. A well in a water treatment plant's $4 million. We want to stay away from that line the best we can. And this is a good way to do it. I mean, it's a good way for the citizens to conserve on their own, and the Stage 2 really helps us also stay well into that line. Any questions? Do you have a wrap-up?
Let's click one more slide here. Okay, we'd just like to briefly talk in closing about sort of what the head for us. Well, we're going, we have already issued direction to staff. The city needs to lead by example and not be the ones that are overwatering or not following the three-days-a-week rule. So for all parks and facilities and streetscapes, we've asked staff to go out, and they've adjusted all of our controllers. Some of our parks, you know, are the odd or the even based on what's in an area. Some of them are city blocks, and they've got two sides. They don't actually have addresses. So we will look to balance our loading between odd and even days, but in any event, they shouldn't be on for more than three days. We also have things such as Veterans Field that are right next to the market, and with some blackout days at the market, we might have to be flexible with which three days to water, so we're not watering while customers are coming in and while they're cleaning up for market. But the maximum for any of our facilities will be three days a week. We are not looking to turn our investment in parks brown at this point. If we get to a Stage 3, we might have to revisit that. But within the three days a week and multiple watering times, we're going to look to keep things green while still conserving to the extent practical. We're on the lookout for broken sprinklers, overspraying, or misdirected. That's a daily chore, because any given day, we get help from rambunctious youngsters and others who step on sprinklers, or play with sprinklers, or twist sprinklers. So any public citizen or council member of UC, an overspray area, city streetscape, or a broken, geysering sprinkler, please let us know. We may have just fixed that same sprinkler within the week, but we need to get back out there, and we count on everybody's eyes and ears to help us get it right. So if reported either through the website or call Public Works' main phone number, we welcome those reports, so we can make sure we're doing our part. We are responding already to reports of water waste with the news and media coverage and the flyers that have just now been received by owners with their August billings. We are going to start with warnings and then escalate to penalties. And the object is not to be draconian, but with the state looking at our compliance after the fact and looking at $10,000 fines, we certainly don't want to be, we do not want to fail to be diligent in making sure we're doing the right things. We are moving forward with water meter installations citywide. That's actually starting here this week. Meter installations will continue through probably February of 2015 to get completed. We got off a little bit of a slow start, but we're going to be working that right in through winter. And once those are all in, we'll be collecting some data, doing some mock buildings for people that would transition from flat rate to metered rates down the road, so they have some ability to adjust their usage. And then sometime next year, we would migrate all of those flat rate customers to the existing metered rate that aren't being enjoyed by some of the newer homes in town. That will then give us some tools to implement and monitor water conservation. We'll be keeping an eye also on aquifer conditions. We are seeing a slight drop in city underground water aquifers. We're now monitoring those four times a year. We're keeping a close eye on that to make sure that you'll get see the variations with those peak pumping periods that we're showing on the up-and-down graph. We'll get recharge in the winter. So we're going to keep an eye on that quarterly to make sure that things are bouncing back when we do see rain conditions. And then, as we heard earlier, we are required to report usage monthly to the state. With that, we would certainly entertain any questions the council may have on the program.
Okay. This may be more for, I'm not sure. With the mall homes, are we still requiring them to show at least one model that has the drought assistance plan in it to encourage people to consider that?
We haven't changed our policies on that.
So they are still required to be shown? Oops, okay, well, I'll go along.
Quick question. Have we checked into the feasibility of using the non-potable water that we're discharging currently for irrigation for city properties?
We are looking into that. In fact, we're hopeful that we might even be able to apply for some state grants to further the feasibility of that. Right now, we don't have a distribution system, and it certainly wouldn't be feasible to truck the water. But we are just about to decommission a forest main with the new Live Oak sewer main. That might be a good grant-eligible project to slip-line that and make it suitable for non-potable water use at higher pressures. We also could be looking at installing some new, if grants were available, maybe some backbone to the east and northeast areas to start bringing water into the east side and some of those high school parks and other areas on the east side of town. If we were able to reuse the current outfall line that's being abandoned to the sewer plant, to bring water back from the sewer plant, basically reverse those flows. If that were to be done, that actually gets water down pretty close to the center of town, and then Walker Park's not very far to the east, and, I'm sorry, to the west, and we've got other areas that could be developed as well. So we're looking at the ideas. Right now, we don't have a way to get the water there. But a large percentage, and Mark can give us what that percentage is, but a large percentage of our summer flows are already going to reuse through agricultural leases out in and around the wastewater treatment plant. We actually reuse a large majority of our secondary treated water.
And a second thing, you were asking about possible problems with our irrigation. You might want to have the guys check out the center of Corillian, just south of Community Park. They're spraying concrete.
Good to know.
Steve, how or who is responsible for the actual enforcement of the water regulations? I mean, do we have staff dedicated to this, or how are we, how are you approaching that?
Well, we do not currently have any budget for water cops, quote-unquote. We would work with our water and street staff to observe and hand out the warnings. We're going to be setting up some discussions with the city attorney to talk about how to go about enforcement of these violations relative to administrative citations. Public Works staff typically are sort of deputized, if you please, to be code enforcement officers, but we do work closely with code enforcement, with the Community Development Department, MPD. We are hoping that we can work out a process. Under these new regulations, there, state law actually provides some broader coverage for any employee of a utility can be involved in handing out those warnings and citations. But we'll need to make sure our ordinance supports that type of.
Yeah, I wouldn't want the code enforcement officer to become the new city water cop by default.
That is not our intent. We're hopeful that we can handle the number of complaints that come in with our staff. If we have to start doing repetitive citations with fines attached, we're going to have to work out a process. And if it looks like it's becoming more than what staff can handle, then we might be making recommendations through the city manager to put on some part-time staff or something to help with that. And we also might have the ability to use CAPS, volunteers, to help with that as well.
And the primary contact, Public Works Office, if someone wants to report something?
366-7260, that's our Public Works main line, and we are requesting that you call that line versus our maintenance line, for those of you that have internal numbers, because that allows to track for multiple repeat offenders and set up a database to do that.
Thank you.
To anyone else, council? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Wincker. Liz, now you've got your appointment. Is she here, or?
She's not. I know she's on her way, so if we could hold off on that.
I'll just keep turning it up, and we'll see what we need to do, okay? Could you please read the public comments?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, "Members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk."
Thank you. Do we have some speakers?
We do. Deanna Hanson?
Hi, council members. The only, the main issue I wanted to get to is, you said lead by example, and my real main concern is, I catch the bus at 5 o'clock in the morning right here in front of here, and the city ourselves wasting hundreds of gallons of water. Not only is it going over the sidewalk, but it actually looks like a little pond in the middle of our parking lot, well, not our parking, but the city's parking lot coming in, and it's consistent. And the reason that I say it's about 100 gallons of water or more is because I know what a bathtub is, anywhere from 30 to 45 gallons. And that easily does about five or six bathrooms, and it's flowing so fast that it looks like a little mini river. And it's consistently every Tuesday, and I believe it's even on Thursday. I do ride the bus down here in the community to Sacramento, and this is a consistent thing for the last four months. So by leading by example, we really got to pay attention to the waste that the city is doing, not just the public themselves. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. And I'm sure you took that, wrote that down, Mr. Wincker, correct? Alrighty. We have one more speaker. Got a few technical issues here. Sorry about that. Doyle Radford?
All right, let's see if I can sum this up in three minutes. Good evening, Mayor Powers and respected council. My name is Doyle Radford Jr. I'm a business representative for Labor's Wolf 185. We represent roughly 5,000 hard-working men and women throughout the 20 counties we cover. Several of the locals within the community here showed up tonight, lived here in Gulf. Our work is seasonal, physically demanding. The hours are usually long. Traveling several hours from your home is a reality many of our members face. One of our valued contractors recently picked up a nice local project, good project, and it looks to put some of these local members to work. The company was GSE. I believe it's the existing treatment plant off of Twin Cities Road, if I'm not mistaken. It's our experience, Labor's 185. GSE is a good contractor. They hire within the communities they work. They give our, offer opportunities to our members to move up to the former positions. They hire apprentices. They require prevailing wage. When our members work outside of that of a labor, they get paid good money. And it's a good thing, because it's seasonal. When there's no work, and when they finish the job, we're sitting at home. So it's also our experience that GSE requires this of their subs. They mandate that they pay the applicable prevailing wage. And so we wanted to come on record and state that that's a good company, and we're really excited to build this thing for you. And, you know, we see it coming in on time and on budget. That's been our experience with them. They've done plenty of other projects within the communities. And I'd like to also say, when we finish this project, we're happy to build that $5 million well that you guys are avoiding building. Anyhow, thank you so much for your time, and looking forward to a good project with you. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate that. Don't hide everybody else out there. Okay, is your person up here yet? Okay, we're going to go on to the consent calendar, and Mark, you wanted to pull three, so I'll let you start with that.
Just a quick question on it. A little bit confused, why do we have the need for an on-call building consulting service? As of the existing service we have insufficient?
Basically, the existing service we have dates back to 2009, and we just want to be up to par with us. It's what we want to do at this point. So we're staying with the forelea, or at least recommended we do so, and adding CSG just as backup to that.
Okay, but my question still stands. Do we need a backup?
We definitely need the plan checking. At this point, we don't have a building official on staff, so if we do need a building official on services, we'd like to have that opportunity to have that person on-call, so to speak. As building does pick up, because, as you know, we only have- As building does pick up, because as you know, we only have, well, hopefully soon we'll have two building inspectors, we only have the one permit technician. Again, we have no plan check engineers on staff at all, so as the building activity picks up, we'd like to be able to be ready to serve our customers as opposed to waiting to that, at that point, to come up with contracts.
And as it states, on-call, they only get paid for the services they provide?
That is correct. Right.
And we have used them before, correct? So this is just on the only?
We are currently using four Leaks, just for plan check services right now, so we are asking for the addition, because we do have a budget, it's just $2,500 for the minimal on-call services if we do need them.
Thank you. Kirk, did you have a question?
Yeah, when you say on-call, is that for the contractual building official services?
Correct. Basically, everything on the list, so it would be a building official, clerical if we needed, or a counter, as well as the plan check services, which we have been using.
I guess I don't understand the need for CSG's contract, though. I mean, has four Leaks, have they not been able to fulfill the needs?
They have at this point, yes. CSG would just be, in case somebody had a problem with four Leaks' plan check services, and we couldn't do it in-house, then we'd have CSG simply for that.
Okay, so they're backup to four Leaks? Four Leaks is the primary?
Correct. Right, and four Leaks would be the only one that we would have for building official and other non-repetitive services.
Okay.
Okay. Also, okay, Liz, do you mind reading the recommended action, please?
Okay, adopt a resolution to authorize the city manager to execute contracts and purchase orders with four Leaks Incorporated and CSG consultants for the provision of on-call plan review and building division services.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Call for the vote, please, Liz.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Okay, Councilmember Payne, you've got the next two, number four, I'm sorry, five and six.
Just a quick question that applies to both of them. What is our process for notifying these people that are delinquent?
Well, our process is that the levies are placed on the county tax roll, and so the county proceeds its collection during the normal course of the fiscal year. After June 30th, they can still make a payment, they receive plenty of notices from the county, but we're required by bond covenants to strip certain parcels. What we've done in the last several years is for homeowners and non-repeat offenders, we're sending out notices, letters, just to let them know they're delinquent before we actually proceed with the foreclosure process and give them an opportunity to make good on the payment, the amount that was due with the original levy and any county delinquent charges, but we don't include any legal fees on those amounts that are for single property owners. Now, all of the properties that are being foreclosed on this evening have prior year or years delinquencies. They've, we've gone through this with them for several years in some of the cases, so they haven't received any additional notification at this point, but they will receive letters from our foreclosure attorney once we've stripped the parcels from their property tax rolls and proceeded with that process.
I just wanted to be sure that, that we were sure that they were being notified before we foreclosed on their property or anything, and I know these look like maybe they are commercial-type people.
Yes.
But a few years ago, we had some residential also, and there was a citizen that came and said he wasn't notified, so I wanted to be sure that we have a record, that we are making them aware that the property's going to be foreclosed on.
Oh, absolutely.
That's always fair. Thank you.
Okay, so Liz will take.
If you have any on-ball, seven.
Okay. Okay, should we take, do we have to take them separately, so they're pulled separately, Steve?
I'll just, please.
Okay, so Liz, would you read number five, please?
Adopt a resolution approving foreclosure proceedings to be initiated against properties delinquent in the payment of the 2013-14 levy for the 1999-1 reassessment district.
Move the item.
Okay. Call for the vote, please. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
And the next one, adopt a resolution approving foreclosure proceedings to be initiated
against properties delinquent in payment of the 2013-14 levy for the Community Facilities District 1988-1. Drive a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Call for the vote, please. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Okay, now we're going to go for the other ones, which are numbers one, two, four, and seven. Liz, would you please read those for us, and then we'll wrap it up.
Number one, approval of the minutes of the special meetings of June 4th and June 10th, 2014, and the regular and special meeting of July 15th, 2014. Number two, approval of the city belt warrants. Number three, we did. Number four, approval of salary schedule for part-time and temporary positions. Number five and six were the foreclosure proceedings. Number seven, approval of proposed salary range and job description for positions of information technology manager and market manager.
Do I have a motion, council?
So moved.
Second.
Call for the vote, please. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Okay, now we're at lighting, landscaping, and maintenance districts. How are we going to do this, Steve? You're going to read just one related to all of them?
Well, we're going to try to be streamlined, Madam Mayor. We're going to make one presentation for all three, and then we'd recommend that you open individual public hearings for each district in the order listed, but we'll only have one presentation.
Okay, and then take them one at a time.
And if you'll bear with me, I'm looking for that presentation.
Should be on the desktop.
Things last words.
Desktop.
Give me just a second here, so the public can follow along. I'm having trouble getting my mouse to show up. Okay. Okay, we should be up, please. Okay, again, Bill, if you'd give a mic there, or? All right. I think we're done. Go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Bill Forrest with your Public Works Department. First up is the West Side Gulf Lighting, Landscaping, and Maintenance District. As you can see from this map, the district is, comprises approximately about 1,080 residential and commercial properties on the east and west sides of Highway 99 within In the West Side District, there were no annexations of additional parcels or subdivision of existing parcels for the past fiscal year. The assessments per parcel are fixed and have not changed since district's inception in the early 1990s. The typical assessment for a single-family residential parcel in the district ranges from $36.62 on up to $221.80. A brief introduction, reason why there's such a range is that the assessment is based upon the lot size as well as the benefit zone. In the West Side District, there are 15 benefit zones, and each benefit zone pays for such things as landscaping, sound walls, street-side landscaping, parks, streetlights. Four benefit zones additionally pay for open space, and the four commercial benefit zones, which are in the industrial part, just pay for streetlights. During past council meetings, we've always tried to keep you apprised of the state of the, particularly the West Side and Northeast area, which I'll touch upon in a little bit. For the last number of years, expenditures have exceeded revenue for particularly, as mentioned, the West Side and the Northeast area. This is a graph. The red line is expenditures, the blue, as you can see, as mentioned, are fixed and relatively flat, and then the green line is the West Side fund balance. As you can see, and this is just looking at the last five years, starting with fiscal year '09 to '10 to fiscal year 1314, and fiscal year '11, '12 expenditures started to catch up to the revenue, and subsequent to that have exceeded the revenue, and I don't have a, my recollection for the prior years is that the revenue and expenditures were relatively matching. And so with the expenditures exceeding revenue, what you see with the fund balance line is that it's starting to decline. In just this past fiscal year, this gap is approximately about $48,000. The current fund balance is approximately a little below $100,000, so it's projected that at this current rate of expenditures exceeding revenues, that the fund potentially could go through its reserve in about two budget years. The options for the West Side are the same as the Northeast, so I'll come back to the options available when I get to the North Side. The North Side District, as well-named, is in the Northeast quadrant of the city, north and east of Highway 99, comprises approximately 3,000 commercial and industrial parcels. Just like with the West Side, there were no annexations or subdivisions of existing parcels for the past fiscal year. Again, the assessments per parcel are fixed and have not changed since the early 1990s. In this case, the typical assessment for a single-family residential parcel ranges from $51.70 to $301.85. Very similar, the assessment can vary based on lot size, and in most cases, all the benefit zones are paying for like things such as median furniture landscaping, open space, parks, As mentioned, the Northeast area with the same colors, reddish-orange is expenditures, blue is the revenue. There's a slight spike in revenue, which I believe is associated with the transfers in, from Fund 6 into the district, and then the green, again, is the available fund balance. And as you can see, as the expenditures exceed revenues, that it's been on a fairly steady drop, and we have a larger available fund balance, but the differential between the revenue and expenditures is an order magnitude larger of about 150,000. As mentioned, our options are, we can potentially cut service levels so that our expenditures meet our revenue. That potentially could be somewhat tricky. Staff will be coming back, hopefully later this year or early next year, with some assessment So one option would be to adjust the assessments such, that will require Prop 218 balloting, and so as mentioned, we'll be hopefully bringing back various recommendations for your consideration For Lighting and Landscape District, number three, it's all new, this district was formed in 2005, and this engineer's report consists of 301 parcels. The additional 71 parcels is the subdivision of Creek Side Unit 3, from one parcel to 71 lots, residential development, which will be starting here pretty soon. So as mentioned, there was a subdivision of an existing parcel in this current fiscal year. The assessments are per parcel and can be adjusted by CPI, Consumer Price Index, which for this engineer's report equated to a 1.69% increase. The maximum assessment for a single-family residence would be $298.32, which represents an increase of about $5 per parcel. In this case, this is a uniform assessment, it doesn't depend upon lot size, it's base per dwelling unit. As presented in a special council meeting on June 10th of this year, the Cultural Recreation Fund will be providing a loan to District Number 3 of approximately $25,700 to balance the fund. This is a bridge loan that's to meet current expenditures, pending revenue associated with further development, annexations in the district. For example, there's an approved tenant map called Fairway Oaks, which is just to the east of the current Creek Side 2, Unit 2 subdivision, that when they do annex to the district, will provide an additional hundred lots into the district and its associated So our recommendation, as mentioned, is to conduct a public hearing for each of the three landscaping and lighting districts, and at the conclusion of each public hearing, adopt a resolution approving the engineer's report for each district and living of approved assessments for the fiscal year 2014, 2015. With that, I conclude my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be welcome to entertain them.
Okay, we're going to, council will take them one at a time, and I'll open up the public hearings first, and we'll see if we have anything to say about it afterwards. Is that okay with everybody? Okay, so we're going to open up the public hearing on the West Side Gulf Lighting, Landscaping, and Maintenance District. So I'm opening the public hearing. Is there anyone here that wants to say anything about that particular district? Okay, so I'm going to close the hearing. Council, any questions?
Yes.
Okay.
I do.
All righty.
Can you sort of describe where the increase in the expenditures is happening? I mean, you've shown this going up, and I'm wondering.
Well, there are two general areas, and if you, we need to be more specific, Bill might have more detail than I have in front of me. We've been looking at this, trying to sort of figure out, and we've got, you know, general things with energy and utility. things with energy and utility costs slowly rising and with being fixed since the 90s where slowly, we had a nice established rate in the beginning, which would allow for replacement reserves and other things. But with that being static for 20-plus years, inflation has pretty well slowly eaten up those reserves, and now we're within a year or two of insolvency, and we'll need to be taking some action to right the ship by certainly a year or two of the current budget cycle. In addition to those sort of gradual things that go up, more and more time is going into these Prop 218s and different things, and notices and engineer's reports. The increasing area that we've seen is in cost allocations from the city for time spent by Finance Department, time spent by City Attorney, time spent by Public Works in processing and reviewing the various annual budget reports and recommendations that we need to make in these districts. So as staff costs increase, those allocations increase also.
Is that the major portion of the?
That's probably been the biggest piece of the pie on the increases. But again, you add that to cumulative, you know, energy costs and fuel costs, et cetera. It's all part of the problem, but we have seen labor costs rising in these districts.
And we're saying it's costing a large proportion of the increase in expenditures is for staff to fill out and forth?
Reports, to go out and, you know, all the financing and all the billings and all of the assessments and audits that have to be done, all of that gets captured through the cost allocation plan back to these districts. So candidly, we're taking a closer look to make sure that those all seem to have been reasonable charges. It's just been the last couple of years that we've seen sort of a significant increase in what those allocated costs are, so we're taking a closer look at those. And we'll certainly bring back some specifics if and when, if we're going to propose rate increases. We certainly, you need to understand what the problem is before you try to fix it.
Exactly.
I think one of the other things that we've seen in the last couple of years is a real significant rise in the utility costs. Heat, light, and power, specifically smud, has changed the way they allocate to municipalities and some of these street lights. And I think more importantly, water rates have increased over the last few years. A couple of years back, we had a 10% water rate increase. And so residents feel the pain of some of those rising utility costs. Our utilities experience the same thing, so those get allocated out as well.
So we're kind of coming to the end of the lines, so we've got to keep an eye on our money, so somebody's got to see where it's going.
So what I understood you say is the city is also charging more against the?
Well, water rates are what the water rates are. And so one of the biggest charges or costs for the landscaping and lighting districts, two things they provide generally, lighting, which is almost all smud, and then providing irrigation for the parks and landscaping areas. So if it costs more and the city raises rates, for example, on water rates, then not only does that mean higher rates on your home bill, it means our landscaping and lighting districts are paying more money as well, because the city pays, the city isn't exempt from water rates. Not only our landscaping and lighting districts, but the city. So City Hall, all other parks and districts that are not within the landscaping and lighting districts, we're now paying, we pay money into the utilities for the water that the utility provides. And we look at our utilities separate from the city. They're separate, what we call enterprise funds, right? And we cost allocate, and we account for those services separately. So the water and sewer fund kind of stand alone from the city. So as the water fund provides services to the city, then the city has to pay the water fund. Or if the water fund provides services to the landscaping and lighting district, landscaping and lighting district pays for that service that's being provided.
So if we ask the taxpayers to approve an increase, there will be like detailed information about the expenditures and costs?
Absolutely.
One example of what the city did to cut costs was last year when we adopted the professional services landscape maintenance contract, and we reported with last year's engineer's report respective savings to each of the district by going to that contract. But as mentioned, you know, other things have gone up, water, power. And the other aspect of, it's not just administration, it's also parks and, you know, staff, you know, to, you know, go to the park to empty the garbage cans, you know, make sure the bathrooms are clean, you know, the services that are not being provided by the professional landscape services. So that cost allocation accounts for their time as well.
And you're proposing to borrow money from the Parks and Recs account, is that six?
District Number Three.
District Number Three. And you feel like we will be able to repay us back in the Parks and Recs by doing what? Again?
With anticipation of additional parcels being added to the district and having their assessments being added, you know, we'll get the full assessment, but their costs will only be an increment greater. And so it will be repaid with interest from future anticipated annexations and subdivisions within that district.
And then in District, I'm sorry?
I was just going to embellish briefly on that, is District Three is actually sort of our model for what we would like to see, a modern lighting and landscape district. It has an inflationary index that allows us to keep pace, so we're not slowly losing ground on revenues versus expenditures. And all new growth, all new subdivisions, unless we form a fourth district, all future development that doesn't go otherwise into a separate new district will be funneled into the lighting and landscape district, Number Three. So its future is bright. The others are built out, and what you see is what you get. But all of the new candidate map proposals that are coming in will be going into landscape District Three by way of a condition put on those maps. And so it has a bright outlook as the economy comes back, that we think it'll get healthy and easily be able to pay back over time those monies forwarded. As you indicated, just the 100 lot subdivision in and of itself would reverse and be able to pay that off in one year.
And in District Three, under definitions, you talk about west side community parks. What is that?
That's Walker.
That's Walker? Okay.
Some of these engineer's reports, when the districts were formed, or before the parks were even named, so that's what they referred to it as back in the formation documents.
Okay, thank you. All my questions. Anyone else?
I had a related question on the, if the water, there's an allocation for the water usage. Is there, like on the parks, does the city actually charge a connection fee for water?
When we build out a park?
Yes. I mean, you know, you're going to have water delivered there, and there's a connection fee for every house, business, and town. Why is there a water connection fee for parks or other city-owned facilities?
I would have to research that to be, you know, factual, but my expectation is that there would not be a connection fee for the city to connect to its own water system. Typically, that would be, the parks are not what's driving the impacts to the water system typically. Typically, the parks are a condition of development. If you're going to develop a neighborhood, then you've got to provide the park space. And typically, those park impact fees would be paying for the parks themselves, and then the water use would just be what the water use is for city facilities. I would have to individually research, but there's not typically a building permit for a park, so there wouldn't be a point at which we would levy a connection fee.
Well, don't they do like, well, then they're doing a cost allocation, they're addressing it for cost allocation, for staff time as well?
Typically, yes. And that's part of the cost allocation, would be processing annexations and new facilities.
Okay. Okay, so we'll do the first one through the west side gulf, the west side one. Do you want to, do you want to raise this all time?
I can.
Okay. Okay, do that, and then, please, I'm sorry.
Okay. The first one, conduct a public hearing regarding the levy of proposed assessments for the west side gulf lighting, landscaping, and maintenance districts 1990-2 for fiscal year 2014, 15, and related engineer's reports. And upon closing of the public hearing, adopt a resolution approving the west side gulf lighting, landscaping, and maintenance districts, maintenance district 1990-2, engineer's report, and levying of annual assessments for fiscal year 2014, 15.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call for the vote, please, Liz.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilor Payne?
Aye.
Councilor Campion?
Aye.
Councilor Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Okay, now I'm going to open the public hearing for the northeast side, the northeast gulf landscaping and lighting district. Is there anyone else there that wants anything? Would that be you, Jim?
Councilor, I have some questions. Your name is Jim Claes. Excuse my voice, it's gone someplace. My question is on this public hearing, so we can ask intelligent questions, I'd like to see a line item of where all the expenses are that we're spending for the northeast area. I think you showed a nice little graph. Can we see what we're spending on?
If you go to the engineer's report, each district has a budget and has particular line items associated with each district, expenditures as well as revenue.
Shouldn't that be available at the public hearing for those of us who ask questions?
It's been.
You just now told me about it.
Well, it's been available on the city's website and the city clerk's office since our prior hearing where we advertised the intention to levy.
Good. You know, as, well, as our seaters and our people who are making less money, every time we turn around, there seems to be another fee, another tax, you want to levy more. And perhaps it's time that we, as you as council members, start figuring out a way to live within a budget like most people live. Maybe start looking at some other avenues of saving some money. I was surprised to find out that the city not only makes money by charging the landscaping districts for the water when you could, as the council, you could have a lower rate, and that could save the city, save the landscaping districts, and the public, and the taxpayers, it could save them money by setting up a different level for that. It's just, it just seems like every time we turn around, that you want to levy a fee instead of working to perhaps find some corners that you can cut. So I would appreciate you taking a look at that and see what you can do before you just hammer the gavel down again. Thank you very much.
You also have anything?
Just a comment, that the city, actually, it's illegal to charge a lesser rate for the utility to charge a lesser rate to the city, and/or the landscaping and lighting district has to charge a published rate that needs to be charged uniformly across its boundaries. So we cannot charge a discounted rate for landscaping and lighting districts. In fact, it's illegal.
Okay, thank you.
And aren't these rates same or similar to prior year rates because there is no inflationary adjustment?
Exactly so, at least for the two districts, the west side.
Yeah, for the northeast area.
Yes.
Because it does not, neither does 1990, does not have an inflationary adjustment. So those two districts, and that is why they're running in the red, is because, as you pointed out, costs are increasing, but the revenue is not kept pace.
Correct. Okay. You're kind of like a senior citizen trying to live on Social Security, but they haven't had an increase since 1990. Then cost of living is going to slowly eat into that.
Correct.
And so that's what we've had with our landscaping and lighting districts, has not been a single assessment since they were formed.
That's correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, I'm going to close the public hearing and call for a vote on, basically, the same motion. Do we have to read it again, or would you?
Yes, we do. But this is for the second district.
Sorry, Liz. Sorry to delay you a little. Didn't want your voice to get like Jim, so.
Conduct a public hearing regarding the levy of proposed assessments for the northeast gulf landscaping and lighting districts for fiscal year 2014, 2015, and related engineer's reports. And upon closing of the public hearing, adopt a resolution approving the northeast gulf landscaping and lighting district engineer's report and levying of annual assessments for fiscal year 2014, 2015.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Second.
Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilor Payne?
Aye.
Councilor Campion?
Aye.
Councilor Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Okay, now we're on to the City of Galt Landscaping and Lighting District Number Three, open for public hearing. No one? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, council. Nothing from council. Okay, Liz, would you read it again, please?
Conduct a public hearing regarding the levy of proposed assessments for the City of Galt Landscaping and Lighting District Number Three for fiscal year 2014, 2015, and related engineer's reports. And upon closing of the public hearing, adopt a resolution approving the City of Galt Landscaping and Lighting District Number Three engineer's report and levying of annual assessments for fiscal year 2014, 2015.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Call for the vote, please, Liz.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilor Payne?
Aye.
Councilor Campion?
Aye.
Councilor Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Okay, now Liz, you wanted to go to your appointment now?
I do. We have a vacancy. We had a resignation from the City of Galt Youth Committee, and we do have one letter of interest from Lupi Flores, who is in the audience. This is Councilor Cruz's appointment, so at this time, I'd like to call Councilor Cruz, and we'll get to you in a minute.
First of all, I was very touched by your letter. I really like to see people are active in the community, helping our youth. I have no problem in appointing Lupi. I really hope that you add your expertise to this group. Thank you.
You want to say anything or stand up to introduce yourself?
You came all the way back. You might as well get up and say something.
You have to go over there, I'm sorry.
No shortcuts.
Again, my name is Lupi Flores, and I am excited to be on the committee with, working with the youth. I have attended a couple of the meetings as a guest, and I am really impressed by the group of kids that are working on this committee right now. And I think that they're going to really make some efforts this year to bring youth into more of a focus for the City of Galt. They're a very good reflection of what I feel Galt has to offer in the youth, and I'm hoping that I can help them kind of move that along as well. But it'll be my pleasure to be able to do that and to be able to work with all of you as well in doing that. Thank you.
Thank you for volunteering. We always appreciate that. Okay, now we're at the strategic plan. We're going to do this like we did before. We re-met again after six months, and we.
Councilor Cruz.
Oh.
Okay.
I'm trying to remember what I need to say here.
Okay.
I'll put it on a record. So we re-met again, and we went over the things that we accomplished in the last six months, and I think it was 173, 193, things that we accomplished. What, nobody, this is a quiz, and nobody knows the answer? Okay, I'll go with 193 things. That sounds good. That we accomplished in the last six months, all of our departments who worked really hard. We now have some six-month goals again, and I'm going to start with Barbara to do the first group, and you're going to read who and what, please.
I want it.
No, yes, enhance and maintain infrastructure and facilities. Just read that one for us, please. Just who and just what.
One through five.
You got it.
Okay, got it. Okay. Who? Parks and Recs Director with input from Parks and Recs Commission and Galt Youth. Safe falls. Recommend to the City Council for Action, a prioritized list of Harvey Park improvements to utilize UCD grant funds. Number two, this will be the responsibility of our Public Works Director to ensure completion of the Chabola Center HVAC system. Again, the Public Works Director will finalize plans, bid, and recommend to the City Council for Action, an award of contract for construction of the All in Heroes Memorial. Public Works Director, ensure completion of the Police Department rerouting. HR Administrator. HR Administrator, lead, is the lead, Public Works Director also involved, and City Attorney working with the IT Manager, implement a paperless contract review process prior to the final signature copy.
Thank you. Good job. Okay, Mike, can you, how are you feeling for being on the-
I'm fine.
Okay, good. Okay, this is our enhanced economic development, and it's to you, please.
You wanna read online, then?
Yes.
Okay.
So I was asking who you work for.
Yeah. Number one is when, at September second, two thousand fourteen-
No, just the who and the what.
Oh, okay, we, okay. I'll get to it. Who would be the Public Works Director? What would be, present to the City Council for Action, the award of a construction contract for the Central Horn Water line extension? Okay, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta make this bigger, because it's hard.
There you go.
Give me just a second here. Oh, much better, okay. Okay, the next, number two, who would be the Finance Director? And what would be, through a third party at no cost to the city, present to the City Council options for acceptance of credit card payments for the City Department's services? Number three, who would be the Community Development Director? Hire a building inspector. Number four, who would be Public Works Director, lead City Manager and Community Development Director, present, what would be, present to the City Council for Action an update to the traffic capital improvement program with the goal of long-term reduction of non-residential traffic impact fees? Number five, who would be City Manager? What is pursue and promote locating Delta College south of Galt, north of Liberty Road, and report the results to the City Council? Number six, who would be the Community Development Director, working with a consultant, oh, he's gonna be busy. What would be complete a draft specific plan and EIR for Eastview Annexation? Number seven, Community Development Director, again, what would be present to the Planning Commission for Recommendation to the City Council, the draft updated zoning code? Number eight, I sound a broken record, Community Development Director and City Manager, what would be develop a plan to expand industrial park north of Live Oak? And finally, number nine, Community Development Director, what would be contingent upon authority from the state to spend bond proceeds, complete the sequela review of the entertainment complex, and make a recommendation to the City Council for Action?
Thank you very much. And Mark, improve financial stability.
My favorite. Starting with the Parks and Rec Director, will be presenting to the City Council for consideration, a recommendation regarding the use of EBT, Electronic Benefits Transaction Cards, at the Galt Market. Number two, the Finance Director, develop a new comprehensive citywide reserve policy to address items such as equipment replacement, establishment of an internal service fund, and usage triggers in reserve categories. Number three, would be the Chief of Police, obtain a long-term use agreement with TVCR, please. California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation for implements to the regional law enforcement training facility. Number four, Public Works Director, develop and present to the City Council for consideration recommendations and a public hearing date for the northeast and West Side Lighting Landscape Districts. And last, Finance Manager and City Manager, present to the City Council for direction, new options for generating revenue.
That's a good one. Okay, Kurt, attract, develop, and retain quality employees, please.
Okay. The who would be the HR Administrator, what, use the survey monkey results to get feedback from the employee committee regarding attracting, retaining, and developing employees, and make recommendations to the City Manager for direction. Next would be, the who is HR Administrator and City Manager, to gather information regarding succession planning process, and present to the management team for discussion and direction. Last item, HR Director, working with the City Manager and the management team, to develop core competencies for positions within their department to use in the NeoGo Performance Evaluation System.
Thank you very much. And last but not least, enhance cultural and youth activities. The Parks and Recreation Director will present to the City Council for Action, a plan to facilitate the appropriate use of the skate parks, including facility improvements and activities. Number two, Mayor Mary Lou Powers and the Chief of Police, colleagues, working with Parks and Direction, I mean, Parks and Recreation Director and City Clerk, will identify the need, define the parameters, and solicit interest in establishing a community cultural advisory council, and make a recommendation to the City Council for Action. And last, the Chief of Police, the lead, the Vice Mayor Mike Singleton, and the Parks and Recreation Director, will present to the City Council for Direction, a plan for City of Galt support of and involvement in the police activities league. I think those are some pretty aggressive things, but we're always really good at accomplishing most, and so we're, I think, on a roll again. Okay, now we're at discretionary funds, and that's you, Councilmember Cruz.
It is. I'd like to have my discretionary funds approved for a hundred and eighty-nine dollars for the use of a company called Fresco for installing banners and removal of banners that are currently up. Normally, we use Softcom, but I understand they weren't available.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, okay, call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilor Campion?
Aye.
Councilor Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Okay, Treasurer's Report for period ending June two thousand and fourteen, Sean, up to you.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, City Councilmembers. Before you have the Treasurer's Report for June two thousand and fourteen, and this report, always ending in June, is what I consider, although it's a snapshot as of June thirtieth, it's kind of, I always like to summarize the fiscal year kind of in review. And I gotta tell you, in the last, this past fiscal year, you know, interest rates have not changed, okay? They've remained stagnant. As such, the city earned a total in the fiscal year of two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. And how that compares to previous years is the fact it's about fifteen percent of years and where interest rates were a lot higher, like, say, at least around five, six percent. So, again, fifteen percent is not very much. Lastly, or a couple things more, I just wanna say, every treasurer always talks about safety, liquidity, and yield. And I just wanna reemphasize the fact that your money, and I say your money being taxpayer money, your money is safe. It's not only in locally here at the Farmers and Merchants Bank, but also in with the state of California, what are called late funds, local agency investment fund. We also have some non-local certificates of deposit, and those are in increments of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is, of course, the limit for FDIC insurance. And then we have what are called government agencies, and those are, like I say, Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac bonds that we have purchased and are holding. And I wanna say that, you know, when you look at, so that resolves the safety, when we look at liquidity, we talk about, you know, how liquid is our money? Well, twenty-three percent of our money is immediately liquid, twenty-seven percent of our money is what I call medium term, which is about two to three years, and then fifty percent of our money is long term, which is greater four to five years. And by law, I can't go beyond five years. So I think that's a very good balance, twenty-three percent, twenty-seven percent, and fifty percent. So that way, we're still liquid, but yet, we're also trying to get as high of yield as possible on those funds. So I'll answer any questions that the council has, otherwise, I ask for your acceptance of the Treasurer's Report. And then, Madam Mayor, if I may, after we go through the acceptance of the Treasurer's Report, I just have one brief little thing else I wanna say, so we can come back to that.
Okay, I think we can do that. Do you have a motion to accept the Treasurer's Report submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilor Payne?
Aye.
Councilor Campion?
Aye.
Councilor Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
And back to you again, John.
Thank you very much. I just wanna tell you, Madam Mayor, that I greatly appreciate the fact that when you only all stood for the pledge of allegiance of the flag, that it kind of hit home a little bit, in the fact you talked about our members of military service that are currently being or serving. And I just want to, because I'm very proud of them, I just want to mention the fact that my son is currently deployed in Iraq. He won't tell me where, he just says, "On a base in Iraq." So I will just kind of leave it at that, but, you know, for those in the audience, if you think that, you know, this kid is born and raised in Galt, you know, you never know, I guess, where he's gonna end up, but that's where he is, and he's serving our country. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor.
And I just wanna say that I have a grandson that returned from Afghanistan, so I know what you're going through, and I would hope that we would all keep our prayers and thoughts for everyone that's over there.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Sean?
Yes?
Where's my picture?
He's very uncooperative and won't give me a picture. Otherwise, yes, I would put it on-
I know he graduated from the academy, so he's got his class A somewhere.
I will make another-
Mom's got a picture.
He deserves one.
I'm not telling him.
I will find a picture.
Believe me.
I appreciate it, though, thank you.
Get a good picture, any picture.
Any picture, okay.
Who doesn't say that? Mom's got a picture.
Not any picture.
It's gotta be sharp, it's gotta be good clarity, I know that.
Okay, good, we're looking for-
We should help you with clarity. If you can find a picture in his uniform.
I'll do what I can.
Okay.
Thank you.
And God bless. Okay, we're now at the public education and government funding, are you gonna take that?
I'm gonna do that, yep.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. This is some good news, that we're gonna be receiving some funding, some grant funding in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars from SAC Metro Cable Television Commission through their public education and government funding program. This is a small fee that's tacked on to cable subscribers that goes towards public education and governmental purposes, and so we've used it over the years to make improvements of the council chambers and the kind of television experience from the users. And so this year, we applied for, and the money's gonna be used to replace the cameras that we have up around the room, to provide some new high-definition cameras, as well as some equipment back in the closet over here, the guys use to broadcast the feed onto TV. So it's about seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars worth of technology and equipment. You should be seeing that coming in probably within the next three or four months. We also have some other improvements from last year's grant that you should start seeing in here, probably within the next month, which is some additional lighting that you'll see. There'll be some new lighting that will help to kind of brighten up the space, and hopefully it won't be too intrusive to the council and too bright as you stare at those lights. There are a few other improvements along the exterior of the building as well, so you should see those in the next month or two, probably going in. So the other main improvement that we're gonna be doing this summer is to the broadcast or the PowerPoint equipment, so you'll see new projectors that would, you know, make the presentation better along the walls, and then a second or a third screen on this side. So during the council meetings, most of the time, this screen behind you will be up, so we can see the nice logo back there, and members of the council, as well as the public, will be viewing the broadcast from this two side screens. So you'll probably see those come in in the next month or two.
Aye.
So that's it. The recommendation is the council adopts a resolution accepting the grant in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, two thirty-five, and appropriate the project funding. And happy to answer any questions.
Okay, council, do I have a motion?
Second.
Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilor Payne?
Aye.
Councilor Campion?
Aye.
Councilor Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Speaking of-
Speaking of, right.
Okay, the Community Development Department, do you wanna say anything about the selection of the two council members?
Explain it real quick to you.
Okay, to serve on the Zoning Ordinance Update Ad Hoc Committee.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor, good evening, councilmembers. Real quickly, this is a request that came about as part of our Zoning Ordinance Update project that we approved a couple months ago. And part of the process that Rainey, who is our consultant, had requested was to form an ad hoc committee consisting of two council members and two planning commissioners, and that committee would meet three times, two hours each time, over in the Police Department's community room, because it's a less formal setting, to basically not only guide the development of the policies for the new document, but also to guide public input. So at this point, what we're asking for this evening is that the council, amongst yourselves, elect two members to serve on the committee, and the next planning commission meeting next week, we'll get the two planning commissioners appointed. The meeting dates, tentatively, the first one would be August twenty-eighth, from six to eight p.m., and then the next two are penciled in at September twenty-third and October sixteenth. However, said those are penciled in depending on what the committee ultimately needs with regard to their budgeting and scheduling. So with that, I'll turn it over with the recommendation that two of you are appointed to the ad hoc committee.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and I would volunteer myself to be on it. Anyone else?
I would volunteer.
Okay, so we've got Kurt and Mark and me. No, so you're, what are you doing?
I'm just listening.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'm just-
So I guess you've got your two members, and do we need a motion? So could we have a motion, please?
I'm ready to approve Kurt Campion, Councilor Campion, and Mayor Mary Lou Powers to represent the council at the meeting.
Okay, call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilor Payne?
Aye.
Councilor Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Okay, moving right along. Where am I? Okay. Public Works Department, authorizing execution of Amendment Number One to the Task Order Number Two, this will be fresh, now, of the master task order agreement with Yost, West Yost Associates, for implementation of an integrated computerized maintenance management system. Do you want to explain yourself?
Well, Mark's gonna explain himself, but I'll apologize to Longfellow, but this is actually the short version.
Yeah.
We trimmed a couple of lines off of that. This is a fairly significant amount of money, it is part of the overall sewer and wastewater treatment plant improvements that have both been occurring, are recently completed, and are proposed for the near future, and we're trying to get a consolidated set of manuals that will take advantage of some of the technology advances that have been made at some of our treatment plants and pit stations and whatnot. And with that, Mark Clarkson will give you a quick overview of what all that money will do for him.
Mayor, council, with the screen going up, I guess that was my signal to keep it short. You know, for the record, they, you know, Mr. Winkler took off about ten pages in my report.
I was just gonna ask you that.
It was, there is such a comprehensive system that we have, that we're proposing to develop here. Over the last five years, we spent to date about twenty-five million dollars in improvements to the utility system. Every time a new facility came online, set of operational maintenance manuals went into a corner over here, the integrated computer system that was developed kind of stopped short of tying in with other systems. And so we ended up with a hodgepodge of systems that are relatively new. So we have an opportunity with new wastewater upgrades coming on, and reviewing all the systems, to bring over four hundred motor and electrical systems, spread out over twenty different sites, to have that communication come into one spot, and for everything to talk to each other, the operations, the design systems, the maintenance manuals, in real-time data, so when we have pumps that are operating out there, and motors, we can get feedback on when those motors are supposed to have certain types of maintenance performed on. Right now, we, everything's kept tracked by hand and paper and pencil pad and everything else, and considering we have about two hundred million dollars worth of improvements out there, we need to do a little better system than that. So in the last two years, I've been looking at different systems, looking at integrating it together, and simply put, it's like the computer that you have in your car, where it diagnoses everything that's operating in your system, a mechanic will come up there and plug into it and tell you exactly what's been going on, what needs replacing, what has a vibration, where, you know, where different things are needed, and that's how simple this system's gonna be, it's gonna be really user-friendly, and we're gonna be able, if we don't like the vendors for the integration in the future, we can take them out for a minimal amount of money and put our data somewhere else and get going. So we're not gonna be locked in on anybody in particular. That's short, if I can make it, and I'm here for any questions.
Barbara? Barbara? No, nobody question? Okay, anybody over here? Okay, can I, let's read the motion, please, Liz.
Adopt a resolution authorizing Number One, the city manager to execute Amendment Number One to Task Order Number Two of the Master Task Order Agreement with West Yost Associates for implementation of an integrated computerized maintenance management system in an amount not to exceed $321,468. And Number Two, a supplemental contingency amount of $28,532 to address unanticipated project issues. And Number Three, the city manager to execute contract amendments within the approved contingency amount.
Uh, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Uh, second.
Second.
Call for the vote, please, Liz. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, guys. Thank you very much. Okay, now, Police Department, the Measure R Oversight Committee Annual Report, and that's to you, Chief.
Evening, Madam Mayor, council. Before you tonight is Measure R Oversight Committee Annual Report. And in the audience, we have three members of that Oversight Committee. We have Dolgren, Spinelli, and Cortez. They're raising their hand.
I'm waiting, because I used to be on a committee with them this time. Good to see you guys. Still, a couple of you still there?
Well, that's Freudian. Galt UniCode 340.160 requires that the Citizens Oversight Committee issue an annual report of the findings to the city council and the people. On January 22nd of 2014, the Oversight Committee met and reviewed Fund 47, which is the Measure R funds, for the fiscal year of 2012, 2013. The end-of-year finance documents indicated that the revenues from all sources totaled $1,091,937, and expenditures totaled $906,767. The document showed that there were no fund transfers into Fund 47 from the general fund, nor were there any transfers of Fund 47 into the general fund, and confirms compliance with Section 3.40.50. Also, the combined schedule report, which was attached, was reviewed by an independent accounting organization, Mason Associates, and they found no related problems with Fund 47 were noted. And that's the end of my report. I don't know if any of the committee would like to speak or not. Okay, Mr. Dolgren?
Flip a coin.
Do you all three want to come up, or? Come on up, see who you are. So we can at least thank you for your working on the committee board.
Evening, Mayor and City Councilmen, it's Dave Dolgren. And I've evolved in this since its beginning back in 2008. I just wanted to make some comments, because I've seen this thing turned out to be a great help to the Police Department. And we have just recently crossed the threshold. I believe we have met, and I know it's been mentioned by other people, that before we can do anything else with Measure R, we have to follow the ordinance to the best, to our ability and to almost to a T, for lack of another word. And I believe all of us, we have, that's why the Oversight Committee meets, is to go through all the figures. We do not tell the Police Department, or the chief, or anyone else how to run the department. We are there to make sure that the funds are properly placed where they should. And if sometimes the lieutenant is there to run the meetings, otherwise, it's not going to be chief. And he's very generous about volunteering information to us about, you know, how we are doing. I remember when this thing started, we had projected budget, we, Mayor, you were on the committee at that time?
I was.
Eight years ago, yeah, 2009 started. And we had a projected budget of $650,000, something like that, I'm not really sure, somewhere around that neighborhood. And we had 000, we had just a projected budget, we didn't know, we couldn't really make a report to the city council until a couple of years later, when the funds started to collect the tax money in, in Fund 47, when it was set up. And I've been part of this for a long time, and I'm going to be stepping down on the February 15th, 2015, for what I leave. It's been a heck of a ride. I've seen this thing start out with nothing, and I see it to the point where we are going to finally get some police cars out of Measure R, we're going to get everything that we need. The few folks up there just passed the expenditure report, or the plan. And this makes me feel really great inside, that this thing is working. Just briefly, I'm originally from San Francisco, and the citizens there would vote something, they never knew what happened to it. And I believe that's my personal inside motive, I've wanted to see where this is going to go. And it looks like it's going to go where I hoped it would have gone, and all that. And I'm not doing it all alone, I've got some wonderful colleagues here, too, I'd like to speak for a little bit.
I just, I'm just going to, I'm frantic, Spinelli, I think it's an honor to work with Measure R, and to work with the Police Department, see where the money is going, and to know that we are being protected and that there was, that way there's some money to be.
I'm Ralph Cortez, I'm one of the newest members on this now committee, and I just wanted to say that it's been real, real interesting, and I enjoy attending the meetings. The, in my opinion, the transparency, the chief, the lieutenant, and especially Dana, I must mention her name, too, as well, provide just about anything that we ask. At a recent meeting, there was, it was just the lieutenant, the chief was out, but there was a question that came up, and the very next day, Dana, he followed up, and she presented all of us with that answer. It was a simple question that the lieutenant wasn't very well, or wasn't, Dana really knew more about what was going on with that, and the chief as well, but the lieutenant was wonderful, and his follow-up was awesome, it was great. So it's been a pleasure working with them, and the chief, it's great working with you as well. Thank you.
And again, I want to thank you on behalf of the council and staff for volunteering your time and going out there and being good citizens in the city of Galt. We appreciate your efforts all the time, and thank you very much. Okay, Liz, we're done with the vacancy, but would you like to report something? Oh, I forgot something, stop.
Stop.
I forgot. Mission to approve, and I forgot to go there the other day. Sometimes I get ahead of myself, forgive me, please. Can we review and approve the Measure R Oversight Committee Annual Report? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you for saving me, Bob. Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Okay, now, we're going to adjourn the city council meeting and convene to the Galt successor agency. Roll call, please, Liz. Board members, Singleton?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Campion?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Powers?
Here.
Any public comment, Liz?
I have no speaker sheet.
Okay, the information and consent calendar, do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second? Okay, all seconds.
I was going to say back in.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Board Member Cruz?
Board Member.
Board Member Powers?
Am I rubbing off on you, I'm sorry. Bye. Unanimous. And we're going to adjourn the Galt successor agency and reconvene to the Galt City Council announced to you, Liz.
Okay, just a couple of reminders, National Night Out tomorrow in three different parks, everybody's invited, the entire community. There are times, do you have those times? It's at Meadowview Park at, from 6:00 to 6:45, from 6:45 to 7:30, I'm not sure if that's right.
Forty-five minutes per.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is at Family Life Church. And then, the community park is after that. And the community park actually starts at 6:00. So anybody that's going out to the community park, they start at 6:00 p.m. The caravan will be there around 7:30.
You're funny.
Okay, then we have a Parks and Recreation Commission meeting at 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers on August 13th. On August 14th, the planning commission meeting at 6:30 in the council chambers, that will take us to our next council meeting of August 19th.
Thank you very much, Liz. Okay, comments by staff? Staff? Okay, nothing here? Anything here? We got anything here? Okay, over here? Geez, okay. How about comments by city council?
I have one thing.
Okay.
At the last library board meeting in Sacramento, they announced a new program, where if you want to learn a foreign language, it'll be offered by Rosetta Stone through the library, and the number of languages they offer is amazing.
That's great.
It is.
Good.
Make it better.
Great.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
I just have something real quick, I just want everybody to know that Galt Police Activities League not only be working with and out of our police department here, but we're also going to be working out of Fair Sight School. We just met with Ms. Whitlock and the Galt Elementary School District, and we've got our facilities use permit in place and our insurance, and so, we're going to be running some after-school programs, and we encourage you to come talk to us. We'll be Room 28, and Powell will update the council on this here within the next couple of weeks.
Great, well.
Did you have anything to add to that? Okay.
Hey, Councilmember Cruz? Councilmember Campion?
Two items. First one, I just wanted to give a personal thank you to all three members of the Measure R Committee. Dave, we've known each other a long time, since 1998, or 96, when I was a police officer, and I really appreciate your service, sir. Second thing, the mayor and I both had the honor and privilege of taking Congressman McLeary around the city and showing him how, what we were doing with our monies, and where we needed help. And he was very receptive to that.
Right, he was a very good man. Councilmember Campion?
I was at the Historical Society Sip and Snack last week, and it was a real good event, I think bigger than it has been in the past, so hopefully, it'll continue to happen.
Good, great.
A lot of fun.
I'm sorry I couldn't make that one, because I know it is a lot of fun, I went to the first one. And with that, I just want to say that we hope we'll see everybody out tomorrow night for fun and frivolity, for National Night Out. We're looking forward to all of you coming to your area, and meeting with the police, meet your neighbors, meet the fire department, meet all kinds of people. So it'll be a great evening, and, right, yeah, the skate park was good. Do you want to talk about the skate park for a minute?
I, you know, I failed that, because I was all about, happy about this thing with the Fair Sight School. We did have an event over at the skate park, it was Thursday, right? Yeah, Thursday. And the attendance was much more than what I anticipated. It was a good turnout, good young kids out there, and that's what some of us have stated in here when they had issues before, they were good kids. Our Parks and Rec Department did a great job in preparing that out there, and so, it was fun, it was a lot of fun. Kids had a good time, we had some, we gave away three skateboards, and we gave away three backpacks, and we gave away some ice cream from Velvet Creamery. Chief, I can't recall what some of the other things were for, but there were free gift certificates for these kids, so they, oh, and the big skateboard, a little girl, how old was she, eight?
Yeah, probably about eight.
And the skateboard was just about as big as she was, but she won the big skateboard, and she was so cute, man, she was just so happy to win that. So it was, it was a great time, our officers were there, we had a few, our SRO officer, the chief was there, and they were just enjoying themselves as much as we did, so it was fun to, fun to watch the kids there. It was a great time.
Okay, so with that, we'll close, and we'll see you all tomorrow night.